So welcome to the second day of our meeting today. Before we start, let me basically remind, because yesterday we didn't mention that, that we had some reports given here, either in person or remotely. But just to point out that we also received written reports from the IETF, IAB and IOC chairs and from OMAC. So we will basically include that in the materials and all trustees, they receive it and you have read it. So just to make that clear for the session. Okay, so today we have a relatively short agenda for this morning and we're going to start with the report on campaigns and projects. So Sally.
Yes, it's going to be me that kicks off initially. Sally and I will be leading this.
Yeah, I don't know how you're going to run these.
So just before we get started, we wanted to share something with you that I hope many of you have seen already, but just a little bit of inspiration to get us in the right frame of mind and that provides the surrounding context for all the work that we're doing this year. So run VT. So I think hopefully that gives you a flavor of the way in which we're projecting ourselves as an organization out into the world. And that is very much the flavor of where we are now and how we're thinking and how we're working as an organization. So if you go to the first slide of the deck, if we can get that up. You'll remember that in Singapore, this board approved our 2018 plan. And the way in which we framed it at that point was that it's very much a plan for action. I hope that video, that brand film speaks action to you. And it's very much a case that right now, as we sit here at the end of Q1, we wanted to provide you with a sense of what we're doing to execute on that plan, how we're moving towards action, how we're embracing change as an organization, stepping up to the challenge of being the action-driven focused organization, and how we've hit the ground running and the progress that we've made in just a short space of time this year. So if we go to the next slide. Fundamentally, our action plan deepens our pre-existing strategic focus on access and trust, to connect the unconnected and to build and restore trust in the internet. To root you back into the pillars of the plan, we're focused on these four things. We're focused on advocacy for specific outcomes, where campaigning is our vehicle for action. We're also focused on the things that are inherent to our DNA, those core projects that define us as an organization and that reflect our values. We're focused on becoming a more unified and a stronger organization, building our community to strengthen our ability to be effective. And we're focused finally on those new things that help us address emerging challenges and respond to the threats that we see out there in the world. These four things really together advance our mission and our objectives. Sally?
Excellent. As we, I think, told you last year, and as James pointed out, this is a shift that has been going on for some time at the Internet Society. But I think the strategic plan that you adopted last year really represents years of work and effort to bring the organization around a common set of goals, of focus and strategy that we share across the organization. What that means though, is that we have to learn, all of us have to learn how to work differently. We have to structure our work differently, break down barriers to communications internally and with our community, and all come together around these shared goals. And so what we have done is put some new ways of working together in place. For example, we have teams of people from across the organization who are managing these campaigns. The leaders of the campaigns are actually our regional bureau directors. So they're taking in addition to their regional responsibilities, they're taking on a global view of a set of issues and really integrating the work across the departments. So it's no longer, from my perspective, a policy goal. It is a series of objectives that we all share and policy simply supports that. So that's a lot of what we've had to put in place over Q1. But if we go to the next slide, one of the things that is encouraging is that it seems to be working, which is always a good sign. This comes from Navid in our Asia-Pacific Regional Bureau, but we have all staff calls now, once a month, where we all check in, what's happening, how are we all working together, what's coming next, what should we all anticipate? And Navid made this point on the all-staff call, that when he went to a recent meeting in the Asia-Pacific region, the Apricot, or the Apricot meeting, the team knew exactly what they were supposed to be doing. Everybody shared the same objectives. They were checking in, they knew what to pitch, wasn't just from his perspective, wondering if the rest of the organization supported him. And he said it's actually working. So that was a good sign for, you know, two months of organizational work to get to that point. So I think with that sort of baseline, I think we're in a very good position to really move this kind of change throughout the organization. Excellent.
Thanks, Sally. So moving on to campaigns specifically, and just to give you a flavor and an update of what has happened there. If you go to the next slide, please come. First and foremost, our advocacy work provides us with strategic focus, and I think that's clear from Navid's comment. It's great to have that endorsement coming back to us from the staff, from around the organization, that makes us feel as though we've put the organization on the right track. So informed by our mission, we have this clear purpose, this top line up here, and that informs everything we do. This is really our big goal, the thing that we want for the internet, for it to be open, globally connected, trusted and secure by everyone who uses it. And ultimately, as an organization, collectively, we're campaigning at that level. Having a one message, one goal strategy unifies all of our campaign activity under the umbrella of shaping tomorrow. So if that is our high-level message, then we can think about the four different buckets, the four specific campaign areas as our ways to take action and the ways for people to take action in order to get us to that ultimate objective. Next slide. If, as Sally says, we've begun this year by putting new structures, new ways of working in place. And really, we've kicked off collectively with an understanding that we're all, Sally says, working together to shape tomorrow. It's no longer a case of different departments working on different things. We're all contributing together collaboratively for a common goal. So coordination, integration, collaboration really are watchwords now. It's become the natural default setting for people working in the organization. And from where I sit, you know, Q1 has really been defined by a palpable sense that we're more connected internally, across teams, we're working in unison, we're working as one. And as Navid says, you know, it's working. Everyone has a part to play. Everyone has a role to contribute, to make sure that we affect the change that we're aiming at. And it's clear that we're working differently, we're working well, we're all working to shape tomorrow, and it feels like we're an Internet Society that's on the march right now. Next slide. Not only that, but the model that we have now is the basis for our work as an organization gives us the foundation for taking our messages and our work out into the world. In the same way that it takes all of us internally to contribute, we need all of the audiences and the groups out there to bring their influence to bear in terms of helping us achieve what we want. So we need now to extend that model outwards. Each circle of influence here has a unique role. We need our community with us, we know that. We need to amplify our voice through the channels available to us, through media, through social media. We need to be able to speak sometimes for the first time to new audiences, and we need to speak to them in a new way, in a different way that will take us towards our objectives. And ultimately, we need to mobilize key groups of people to get change to happen. How we're doing that in each of the campaigns is covered in the next four slides, which I'm going to turn to Sally for.
So next slide. So I'm just going to walk you through at a very high level, and then my colleagues will jump in with some specific sort of wins that you can sort of grab onto for Q1. Just to remind you that in each of these campaigns, I'll remind you of the goal and then Mark walk through a little bit of the progress that we've made. The goal here with respect to the Internet of Things, Security by Design, is the adoption of security and privacy in IoT devices and services to protect the network, its users and critical information infrastructure. So we're approaching this from, I think, three angles. The first, in no particular order, is of course the vendor angle and device manufacturers, people that are actually, the organizations that are actually putting these devices into the market. We want to convince them to think differently about security, or in some cases, to think about it for the first time, and to really focus on putting devices in the market that meet basic expectations of security and privacy. The benefit of this is we can draw, as I think Frederick said yesterday, we draw on the OTA framework. We look to globalize it around the world and make sure that it has buy-in and that it is relevant in markets around the world. And we're making a lot of progress already. We have, we think, at least five IoT device manufacturers and service providers are ready to publicly commit to supporting the OTA framework. And our goal is to continue to build that kind of support in the industry community to do the right things. The second community that we're focused on is of course, the consumers of these devices. This is a bit of a new space for the Internet Society, but we need to work, all of us need to work on the demand side of this equation. Consumers need to demand and expect privacy, security in the devices that they are being served. So the other, a couple of weeks ago, we had the Safer Internet Day. I think I sent something around to all of you about that. We really tried to build some momentum that we can then grow throughout the year on encouraging consumers. We're looking at some partners who do this really well, Consumers International, there are others out there that we are working on, on building some relationships where we can bring our global perspective to a set of expertise in terms of consumer outreach that they have. This, we can leverage our brand, we leverage our chapters, we have a whole, I think, set of tools at our disposal, and we're starting, I think, to do well in that space. And then finally, there's a real policy angle to all of this. Governments are very interested in these issues. We want them to make good decisions about IoT security policy. And again, the OTA framework is a basis for that. In particular, two places that we're quite focused on, as Roshi well knows, in Japan, government has made this a key priority. And the chapter there is a wonderful partner for us and the academic community to really make some progress in that market. And then in Canada, they have asked us to lead a multi-stakeholder process to develop the security approach for the government of Canada on IoT security. So that's a huge opportunity to lay that framework. And the first meeting of that group will happen in April. So we're making good progress there. Next slide. On Internet Governance, our goal is, we're shifting our goal a little bit, we're not abandoning our commitment to basic Internet governance principles and the work that we have done for well over a decade. But what we have decided this year is that it is time for governments to stop just saying nice things about the multi-stakeholder model and actually start doing it. So we want to see governments reform their decision-making processes in order to actually be multi-stakeholder. It's one thing to get nice words in a resolution, it's another thing to actually do it. And we have some examples. So the one I just mentioned with the Canadian government of actually using a multi-stakeholder process to develop policy is one example. The African Union has been a fabulous partner with us on security issues. They want to develop multi-stakeholder processes to help them work through cybersecurity data protection issues in Africa. There are a number of these other examples. Some of our chapters are leading these kinds of endeavors in France, in Switzerland, in the Philippines. So I think there's a lot of good touchpoints that we can make out in the world, proof points to say to governments, this can be done. So enough with just saying the nice words, it's time to start doing it. And we'll come back to, there's been a couple of really great opportunities with the Internet and Jurisdiction Conference in Ottawa. Raul will speak later to the work we're doing to reform the IGF and other, I think, issues that's more of the global level with the G7 and the G20 to really make a actual multi-stakeholder policy development process in a number of forums around the world. Next slide. On community networking, our goal here, as you well know, and you saw in the beautiful pictures yesterday, is to show the world that there is another way, or new ways, innovative ways of connecting the hardest-to-reach places on Earth. And the community networking is a way to do this. So early in 2018, we have identified three flagship projects that we want to launch this year, similar to what you saw in Tushetti. We want to do three of those kinds of projects this year. As Merritt pointed out, these are not things that happen overnight. These take years and months of development and partnerships, et cetera. But we have the first agreement signed with Kyrgyzstan for that flagship deployment that was signed earlier this year already. So in Q1, we already have steps being made. We also know that we need partnerships. We need partnerships with industry, we need partnerships with experts, with governments, with others in the community, and that is starting to happen as well. We are working with GSMA to try to see where they could come in. They have excellent training facilities and expertise that these community networks need. We have partnerships with the Organization of American States. And again, that's a policy-level partnership that lays the framework for the flagship work that we want to do in Latin America, for example. And then finally, what are the policies, the public policies that need to be in place for these community networks to succeed? Whether it's Spectrum, we're looking at business sustainability models, what are the things that these community networks need? What are the policy tools that they need to be successful? And you will recall that a few, I guess it was about a week ago, we put out a discussion paper on innovative uses of Spectrum that's in the community for discussion and feedback right now. Next slide. With respect to manners, I think this is something many of you know, but this is about our commitment to overall routing security and norms for routing security that we would like to see network operators around the world adopt to make a more secure and stable and resilient network for everyone. And really, what this is focused on is can we get partners, ambassadors, other parts of the community to join with us? We cannot do this as the Internet Society by ourselves. We need people who are willing to speak up and say, this is the right thing to do. We have, as you'll see, LinkedIn, Akamai, Cloudflare, Limelight have already agreed to be ambassadors for this project, working with the IXP community and also academic networks around the world to really, A, raise awareness, and then B, get them to join in. And so I think Olaf will speak to this a little further. We made some good progress at the Apricot meeting a few weeks back. Next slide. So I think at this point, I've walked you through sort of what we're trying to do and some of the progress that we've made, but I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to highlight some of the specific wins that we've already had. And even though we say Q1, we're actually not even through Q1 yet. So we have just the first two and a half months or so of the year. And I think maybe Raul, if you want to speak to the UN and IGF, et cetera?
Yes, thank you, Sally. Nice picture, by the way. That was a great meeting. And that was, I think, that's the first remarks that shows the, how we are perceived as a very important player in this field. We did something that's, I think, that was unique. We had a meeting at 10:00 AM with the Number Two of UN and at 11:00 with the Secretary-General. And it was, we realized that was unique because we realized that there were no protocols for going from the office of the Number Two to the office of the Number One. Because it is supposed that when you go to UN for having this kind of meeting, you go either to see Number Two or Number One, not the two of them together. So that at some point, the people had to put us alone in an elevator because the people of the office of the Number Two didn't have authority for going to the office of the Number One. It was amazing, and nobody understood how we really were doing that. We realized that the importance of the meetings we were having, just through these minor things. And the meeting was scheduled to be a 20-minute meeting, and it went through more than 35 minutes, and the Secretary-General really showed interest. For us, it was very clear that those Internet-related policy issues are of great importance for him, and have a very relevant place in his agenda. But he paid a lot of attention to what we said. And in fact, he committed to continue working with us and to not do anything disruptive. We saw that he was learning from us, saying, okay, I understand, I understand that I don't have to be disruptive with IGF, building parallel things. So it was very interesting. And one of the consequence of that meeting is that, and I will link to the other thing that Sally mentioned, that during the IGF consultation meeting last week in Geneva, for the first time, the UN Secretary-General sent a person to be there. And we interpreted that as a consequence of the meeting we had with him. We understood that it opens our doors for continuing working with him. And the fact that we launched this blog under my name the week after our meeting with the Secretary-General, I think that kept us in his radar. And that blog was a very, has had very impressive reactions, got impressive reactions and hundreds of tweets and retweets. And that was my most popular tweet so far in my life. And in fact, last week, during the open consultation meeting, many of the other speakers representing other stakeholders made reference to our blog and to our position. So we are positioning ourselves as the leaders, not only leaders in supporting the IGF and everything that is related with IGF and the IGF ecosystem, but also stepping up, saying, this is not enough, we have to do more, and showing what is the path forward. Thank you.
So a few words about Apricot. I think that that message from Navid that you saw, that quote, is actually capturing that spirit. And one of the ways why that is the case is that we're leading this project with the whole organization. These campaigns are managed through the whole organization. The regional directors actually lead the implementations of the campaigns. And that makes for a mesh of contacts through the organizations, which makes us very effective in these programs. It is not the case that manners is an Internet Technology Office campaign anymore. No, it is the organization's campaign. And that is why when we went to APNIC, we have two Apricots. We've got APNIC on board to sign us an MOU. That's where we got LinkedIn publicly stated that they will be an ambassador, that we had a routing boss attended by 150 people with a survey on the floor that indicated that people actually find this important. That we started negotiation with Limelight, Cloudflare, Akamai and ISP Association of India, the ISP Association of Bangladesh. By doing that, we actually create the levers that we need in order to get to the final result, which is a higher security of the routing plane through the use of the manners principles and actions. That is what we're, will continue to do. We're seeking new partnerships in the community. One of the things that is forthcoming will be a launch of a partnership with IXP communities so that they, where many of the operators join, of course, can act as ambassadors and create further momentum. We cannot do this alone, and this year is the time to build momentum with partners and communities to get it rolling. Over to...
And then the other one that I'll just highlight, there are a number up here, but the Global Internet and Jurisdiction Conference was in Ottawa this year in February. And we took advantage of the fact that there were a number, a confluence of individuals as well as ISOC interests happening in Ottawa at that time. First of all, was the Global Internet and Jurisdiction Conference itself. Kathy Brown had a keynote speech there and really challenged the community to not sit back, not be complacent, but actually be committed to this model and do the hard work of getting it implemented because we care about the internet. And apparently, from all the feedback we got, that speech really resonated throughout that community. And many of those in the audience are people that are active in a lot of Internet governance and Internet policy environments around the world. And so that was a good moment, I think, to say that and say, this is where ISOC is coming from. But in addition, as I mentioned, we have this project with the Canadian government on IoT security, and the Canadian government is hosting the G7 this year. And so they are in a position right now to be a leader. And we would like the Canadians to step up and lead in the international discussion. And so we positioned a piece in a leading publication that was read by politicians across Ottawa, which was our target audience, and that Kathy published, again, saying, Canadian government has an opportunity, we see you as partners, we see you as leaders, we're here to help, please do that. We used that, Kathy and Mark Buell, our Regional Bureau Director, used that as a basis for the conversations they had in the Prime Minister's Office. And the Prime Minister's Office had read that piece, it was on their desk, and by the time the first meeting was done, that message had gone up to the Chief of Staff. And so this is about not just having a piece in a publication, but actually leveraging that to a goal that we have, which is that we want Canada to be a leader in this conversation. I think this is something, Olga, I'm looking at you, you know, this is an opportunity for a government like Argentina that's hosting the G20. I mean, this is about creating impact and not just a one-off event, but building on it over the course of the year, and building a series of partners in the international community that will actually advocate for this model.
Thank you, Sally. So if we move to the next slide, that actually takes us really nicely onto the strategic role that communications has to amplify and to ensure that our messages do reach the right people. This is the piece that Sally was just talking about, this Hill Times piece, which was on the desk of those influencers, those people who can actually make the decisions. We're actively there, shaping their thinking, influencing their opinions, and in this case, you know, advocating for Canada to sort of lead the charge on implementing those multi-stakeholder processes, reforming their domestic policy, and we can then work with Canada to roll that out and snowball that around the world. So really very effective. We've had a lot of other successes in terms of media already this year. A couple are just highlighted here. A couple are just highlighted here. Many of you, and I remember sending all of you the New York Times piece on the Tuchetti Project, which of course is a great story about a community network that we have supported and Raul, you visited to see it in the flesh. But there's a lot more that we can do with stories like that. We plan to create stories around the deployments that we are projecting for this year in Zimbabwe and Argentina and Kyrgyzstan. And to see those with media and use those as examples of what can be done. And the fact that we need other people's help to expand access in that sort of way. Using media channels, traditional and new media, is critical in all of this. In Q1, we've really tried to introduce a lot of the ideas around security, access and governance. We've tried to introduce the concept of why people should care, go out to those broader audiences. And generally speaking, I think the results we're seeing are helping us set a benchmark for how we should measure our media success across the rest of the year. We've, just to throw a few statistics at you, we've had over 600 mentions of the Internet Society and their work already in the first two and a half months of this year. 245 of those are in North America, but we have a strong media presence in other regions. We've had 109 mentions in Latin America, for example, a similar number in Asia. But more importantly than that, we've had over 100 feature mentions. So those are articles that are specifically about us and about our messaging and about the, we've given real space in terms of exposure online, in terms of what we have to say, which helps us shape thinking. We've had about 30% of our coverage is very positive in its tone, 60% is neutral but carries our messages. So we're in a really strong place to continue to leverage traditional and new media for our campaign objectives. Next slide. That's not the only thing we're doing. We understand the value of other ways of reaching out to people, particularly the crucial role that social media can play in engaging and mobilizing a broader group of influencers out there. And we need people to help us change the course of the future of the internet. We need them to help us put pressure on those decision-makers. So part of our strategy is very much taking advantage of the opportunities that are right for us to hook onto. And we've done that successfully on a number of occasions. Sally has already mentioned Safer Internet Day, which was back in January, where we created the link between that and starting a conversation on social media by using our 25 under 25 heroes to get their perspectives on what the safer internet means for them. So be part of that safer internet conversation. We've done a similar thing with International Women's Day on the 8th of March, which of course is a continuation of our focus to shine the light on those women who are making a difference on the internet and for the internet. But it's really linking to some of our core messages for internet governance and the multi-stakeholder model about how everyone needs a voice on the internet and how everyone needs to be included, including women. This picture is all about World Consumer Rights Day, which gave us the opportunity to begin to introduce the issues around IoT, begin to educate a broader consumer audience on what it is. Because they certainly do not know, if you've seen the video that we posted on Twitter, we actually asked people in the street, what is IoT? And the answers that we got are very interesting. They ranged from institute of technology to something about theater. You know, it's a moment for us to realize that whilst we are very close to these issues, a lot of people out there are not. So we need to begin to educate and bring them up to speed so that they can make the right choices and they can get to that place where they're demanding that the manufacturers build IoT security. The teddy bear is exactly that. It's for a consumer audience and it's helping people understand that the toys and the devices that they buy that are connected potentially pose security risks and that they should be demanding better security in the things that they buy. And that is a connected cuddly toy. Yeah. So these moments are a great way for us to shape the conversation and be relevant in a global context and we're grabbing the opportunity where we can. Yes, absolutely, and safe, which is the point. So next slide. I've talked a little bit about social media. Just to provide you with a little extra window on some of our work in Q1. A period between the 12th and the 20th of March, which coincided with World Consumer Rights Day on March the 15th. We went through a controlled exercise of measuring the performance and the effectiveness of our social media across multiple channels, including Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn. And we set ourselves some targets. We wanted an engagement rate, so engagement can take many forms in terms of tweets, retweets, likes, etc. But we set ourselves a target of 1.2% engagement rate across our activity. Our Twitter polls came back with a 1.9% engagement rate. And that's about us, you know, being part of a conversation to actually get some input from people rather than just a one-way conversation. And our focus messaging came back at about 1.4, 1.42. So overall, we had quite an impressive engagement rate, which tells us, and again, this is about benchmark setting for how we can use our social media tools this year. It tells us that we can use social media effectively to influence in our own right, be part of the conversation and use those channels to build advocacy. So everything is in place to do more. So it was encouraging for us to know that. Suffice to say that a lot of this is still new. We are reaching out to new audiences. We're reaching out to them in a new way, with a new tone. And we're aiming to be much more bidirectional. It's no longer a case, in a campaign context, that we, as the Internet Society, just broadcast our messages. We want to hear back, we want to engage, want to start conversations and carry on those conversations. Yeah, so I do need to watch time. All of that, if we go to the next slide, takes us, I guess really, to the final piece of the puzzle, which is about facilitating the action that we want people to take. We need to motivate people, stand up and take action for the future of the internet, fundamentally. Here, we are building a purpose, fit-for-purpose destination online for people to do just that, to take action. We call it our Campaign Hub. And over the course of the year, we'll be populating it with things like open letters that call for change, calls to action for world leaders, stories such as the community networking stories around the world that highlight the need to connect people in a different way. And content-led, interactive content such as maps. I was talking with Walid yesterday about how we could build maps here that show a whole range of different things, such as the shutdowns that are happening around the world, the places that need to be connected. We can do an awful lot with that kind of thing that tells people what needs to be done and how they can help. So as we move through the year, we'll iterate on the Campaign Hub and this will be our destination for making things happen. Next slide. And the next one. Beyond campaigns, and coming back to the pillars of our plan, there are some key things that we're doing to continue to prioritize the programs that are core to us. I don't think I need to dwell too long on this slide, but all of these things here are very much in the mix. Some of the recent activity includes the call for nominations for the Costel Award for this year, for example, that's gone live recently. We're continuing to use our 25 under 25, they're such a valuable resource for us and we're making maximum use of them because they're willing to do it and they really have the reach and the attitudes and the perspective that can help us reach new people. So we're working very closely with them and we're planning our community engagement, including into community for the rest of the year and how we tie that to our campaign activities so it closes the circle. Beyond that, there are a number of other projects which Raul will talk about on the next slide.
We go very quickly through this. You know that beside the campaigns, we are still, we are working on many other things that are equally important in our work plan. One of those areas is IXP's and interconnection. One of the things that we have done is that we have already made a lot of progress in the organization of AFPIF, that is the key meeting on this matter in Africa. It has been already launched, it will be held in Cape Town in August. Also on IXP's and Africa, we have been working since last year with Facebook, trying to agree on a grant for supporting our work on IXP's in Africa specifically. They had already supported before our work on this matter in LAC. We have gotten very positive reactions on this and think that we are in the right direction. Probably we will have some news in the, in short term. The Network and Distributed System Security Symposium was held this year in San Diego in February. It was again very successful, attended, fully attended by hundreds of people. But the contents, and the quality of the contents and quantity of the contents were very important. You have some numbers there, 71 papers, 18 posters and workshops. And one of the most important things is that, not only this is one of the five academic meetings on security on the world, but that something that makes it unique is that all the contents are public, are published on the internet, videos, papers, everything. With regard to sustainable development goals, we have a good partnership with GSMA, UN Women, ITU, that is named equals. And we are, leaders indeed is one of the, I will not say leaders, but one of the relevant pieces of this partnership. And Shosh Tonya, our colleague, has been recently appointed as Vice Chair of the Steering Committee of Equals, which is really an honor for us and is also a recognition of the work that we are doing on gender things. And it also gave us an opportunity to be involved in the W20, that is the branch of the G20 meeting that deal with gender things, that is led by GSMA. And this partnership has been an avenue for us to be involved in this group. The IETF Journal is now fully online. We have had very successful fellowship programs, not only the IETF fellows and also the policymakers that I will not speak, you had the opportunity to see it this week. And on training, we have started a course, a learning course in Africa with 300. I didn't realize that, I told Kevin Chez yesterday, how did you give me that number, 299? You should have lied to me. You should have said 301. But so I cannot change his number. So that's how, we are training 300 people in Africa and those people come from those countries. On chapter development, it's very important to remark that you remember, we were talking very much last year about the new chapter letter. We are still already rolling it out and probably more than 29, it was just one week ago, but so probably more than 30 chapters have already signed in it. And we are pushing hard on the, having this signed as soon as possible. And the chapter on MiFAN has been already launched. Finally, the chapter tone that was mentioned yesterday, and I want to just to say a few more words on this. The chapter tone was, is a very interesting initiative. It was launched as an initiative of, it was initiated as an initiative of one person in the LAC team, Nancy, that is our chapter manager there. And that it was a very good idea, the team supported it. There was a competition between the chapters in LAC last year. And the chapters liked it very much and they asked it to turn it a global program. And it was very successful, as Kathy mentioned yesterday, there were more than 30 participants in the competition. And Wikimedia Foundation was very interested in partnering with us and they supported two of the chapters in the preparation of the projects. The winner of the competition was, as Frederick said, our Turkish chapter. And this partnership with Wikimedia has been so successful that now, by initiative of our Women Special Interest Group, we are working with Wikimedia on having an edit-on day, it probably will happen in April. And it's very interesting because this is exactly, and we have talked with Olga many times about this, and it's part of our speech, that we always say that for making internet relevant for women, we need women to be more involved in creating contents. And this exactly fits and does, and that's part of our speech. So it has been a great honor for us to be awarded by, in the WISIs and it's an interesting recognition. And last thing about this is that, until last year, we were promoting other projects to the WISIs prizes, projects that we support. So at the end of last year, we were talking among ourselves, why we don't propose our own programs? They say, no, no, but no, that's, you think, that's, okay. And we did it and so we got this prize. Sometimes we are more humble than we should. And so that's, the team is very happy with this recognition. Thank you.
I'm conscious of time, so I'm going to try and speed up a little bit over the next couple of slides. If we move to the next one. This is all about how we're strengthening the organization. A lot of this is work that has been in motion previously. The point on this one is for me to say that we're really focused on building our internal communications to get people aligned internally for the work that we have to do. We've never really had an internal communications framework internally within the Internet Society. We're putting one in place. We're using Intersect, our intranet vehicle, to help us to do that. So the internal communications question is an important one, a part of the comms mix and we're working on it quite heavily. Todd, do you want to talk very briefly about...
Yeah, just a quick update. We keep calling this the tie tip, but is this board-directed funds that you all put forward to help us modernize some of the systems? There's three main projects in that. There is our AMS project, which we've been talking about for a long time. We are now out into RFP with that. So we have two, as of Monday, I think a third one came in long about Wednesday, has said they will respond to RFP. So we're looking for an April selection. We have a lot more information coming to chapters and others about that. The second project is our financial management system, which Sandy's team is leading, to modernize after many, many years of old system, bring us to the 21st century with our general ledger package and all of the things that go with that. And then third, James was talking about the Intersect, which I have to commend the comms team. This was a project that IT took and built up to a certain point and said, please, you know, went to comms and said, please help us with it, we make this better. And they have jumped all over it and it's become a great tool for the organization. But it is written in our old platform of Drupal and we want to modernize it into WordPress like what we did with the website. So there is a section of this tie tip money where we will use to modernize those facilities and move forward. All of these projects are on track as we have planned them out for 2018 and looking forward to completing them on time this year. Thanks out there.
Next slide. Our brand work, clearly our brand is in place, we have a very strong foundation. We're continuing to mine that and mine the value in that to position us as the organization externally that can lead the global conversation on the future of the internet. We're doing some internal things there, we're continuing to work on tools and resources for our community. And externally, we're carrying our brand through our campaign work and through the other projects in a number of different ways. One point I will call out here is the great work that Dan and his team have been doing on the website, that really aims at making us into a more news-driven, more topical destination for content about the internet. And we are working hard to report ourselves and become more of a reporting organization, both in the context of global events and the things that we do. So we're creating our own content there as part of this project. And then on to new initiatives for the next few slides. Sally, do you want to, it's Olaf for OTA.
Yeah, so OTA is one of our new initiatives. As you all know, we took over OTA last year around this time scale, I believe. And the short version of this is, we're on track. We're retaining membership. We've launched one of the key deliverables this year, the Cyber Incident Breach Trends Report Guide, with guidelines such as the one that Harish asked for yesterday in the context of our own breach readiness report. Obviously highly involved in the IoT project, we hired new staff and we are preparing for Obviously highly involved in the IoT project, we hired new staff and we are preparing for the trust audit document that we will publish, I believe in Q3, beginning of Q3. All on track.
With respect to the collaborative governance project that you approved in November, that project was launched really officially in February. And we think it's on track. We had two community calls in February, it was actually early March, and have another one scheduled for next week. And the participation has been very good. We have 100 people already registered as advisors, people who want to participate in the work. Our assessment so far is that there is a lot of interest, particularly in the training piece of this, people, that is an aspect of multi-stakeholder governance, that's maybe a piece that's been missing that we've identified and people seem to really be interested in that. On convening, there's a lot of interest. I think right now we're at the stage of cultivating the issues, making sure we have the stakeholders who'd be willing to commit to a process and participate actively. And also providing some support for existing projects, for example, the IoT project in Canada, and also talking to the African Union about some of the internet governance work that they are doing. And they've expressed interest in that. On the academic network, the goal there is to kind of build this network of academics, both within the internet space but also outside, that are working on collaborative governance, whether it's in the internet space or environmental issues, or you know, you could name a number of topics where these kinds of tools are used and create a network where that kind of research could move forward. And there does seem to be quite a bit of interest in that as well. So we're at the early stages here, but I think we're feeling pretty good about the progress so far and we think that this is on track as well.
10 seconds. Civil Society Initiative, we have built very important partnerships on that field, that is a field that is relatively new for us. We are building relations with many relevant organizations in the global level. We already have a database with 2,000 records about civil society organizations from all around the world with a lot of information, obviously respecting all the policy for keeping the information in our database. And we are now working regionally to bring this database to at least 4,000 records. And that will be a very huge asset for us. We are launching a survey through our partners to reach out even more civil society organizations. This is not only because it is important not only to know more about them, but to know about what they need so we can work not only in a, some of the programs we will develop will be for involving civil society organizations in our programs, but we also want to develop programs that serve those civil society community. Finally, we are working hard on in the intersection of this initiative with the campaigns and making all these assets that we are building to serve the objectives of the campaigns.
So we're nearly done, a couple more slides, very briefly. If we move to the next one. So hopefully that gives you a sense of progress today. I think there's been a lot that's going on, there's a lot of progress made. Q2 is all about continuing, engaging more with our community, advancing our work through more compelling content, building that engagement, using events, dates in the calendar to our advantage, and having stronger calls to action in campaigns. And on the next slide, behind all of this are the people. Everyone is working hard and the passion to make a difference is showing through. That's it. Hopefully we've left some room for questions.
Not much. We're two minutes.
No, 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 actually seven minutes. So any, thanks for the present, I mean, I usually enjoy these presentations because it's more like a day-to-day job, so I think it's very important, even though sometimes we focus on other things, so.
I can donate also five minutes of my next presentation.
Okay. Then we're talking about 12 minutes. So I have Walid and Olga. Olga Walid.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much for the presentation and thank you and commend you for the good work. I think that the messages and media channel thing is fantastic, as far as I can perceive from the Latin America media, and I think I told you that in person, but I wanted to share it with colleagues. Also, the work that you're doing towards the campaign in relation with partners is, I think it's very good. But we saw with the chapter tone, the impact that involving, deeply involving the chapters do have in this type of work. I think there is a missing link still in between these campaigns and the community talking about chapters and organizations. I don't see that being really communicated and engaging in a systematic way, the chapters. I know that there are some chapters involved, but I still perceive there is space for improving that link, also with the organizations in the different regions. I saw your initiative with civil society, that's fantastic. Maybe you can add also chapters and organizations into involving them in the campaigns. So my suggestion would be to reinforce your work and make it stronger. Involvement chapters, you saw what happens with the chapter tone. It came as a simple idea from one member of the organization and it's spread all over the world, now everyone likes it and it has a very big impact in the community. But very, very good work. Thank you.
Two points, actually. I mean, first of all, of course, congratulations and this really is, makes us proud of being leading in this field. One point is there are indicators that are not easy to detect, impact indicators. One example is, if you remember, I was coaching a couple of awards at the Los Angeles, and one of them turned out to be a TED speaker because of the award. So that's really, and Le Kulkani, actually I recommended him to give a talk and ended up giving a speech. And now he has actually attained more than 600,000 views on TED. And so that's just because of the awards, actually. The other one is, I forgot his name, but he is the inventor of the software that detects fake news. And so he's become more, more entr- yes, from Greece. And so these are examples of impact that we don't necessarily, maybe don't keep track of, but you can actually have, and perhaps there might be an idea of having an alumni or some sort of network, extended network for these to follow up. The other point is about the maps and data. We have enormous types of data that we are not utilizing. So one example of structuring this data so that it can be reused by others, because on the academic level, there might be a very useful resource in the data you collected, which is not structured, it's archived. So I'd say if we invest a little bit and put this data into our, I mean, reusable forms of structured data, that would be exported through a CSV or other forms of standardized machine-readable forms. And this would actually be able to become a resource for academics, for researchers like myself and after I'm out. And also there are people who are looking at ISOC as a reference, because in internet society, the wording, the brand is so powerful. So if you are the ones who track, for example, internet statistics, internet usage, impact regions, I mean, all sorts of things related to the internet, this would be an enormous resource or potential to tap into.
Yeah, we're always talking about this security by design thing. Then what I'm, what we are doing in Japan or the other person is, say, the investment in the security doesn't have incentive in many cases. So what we are saying to them is they are trying to making incentive to put money on cybersecurity measures. So one of the things we are doing is the security would be a value creator for the business operation. And also, we're talking with the CEOs, CFOs, they should think about risk management or risk assessment, then they start to think about how much money they should put on the security, the how much money they gain from that investment. That kind of cycle is, would be a very important thing from the viewpoint of corporate operation point of view. So what we are doing is the, cybersecurity is a kind of, you know, corporate governance from the viewpoint of high financial thing. Once we did that, we can avoid their government try to enforce them by regulation. So that is the nature of the ISOC, I believe. We don't want to enforced by the government by regulation. Industry, we want to put those incentive by ourselves. That is a basic, you know, direction we should share. That's my personal opinion.
Just to respond to that very quickly, that is exactly the way that we are approaching most of our security-related programs. Just as an example, the breach guide is written in a way that appeals to risk management, to compliance officers, makes the case that if you have a data breach or if you mistreat your data, that can have severe problems for your, for your organization. I don't think we have to say that this week. In manners, last year we had a research firm look at what is the value proposition for manners? The outcome of that research by 451, I believe the research company is called, was indeed that there, by signaling that you're managed compliant, there is a benefit. And also with our IoT campaign, we're looking at signaling mechanisms that improves the value for the producers so that their actions are actually signaled to consumers and you might have a better chance that there is actually economic benefit. It's one of the ideas of the framework is indeed that we signal framework compliance and that becomes a value add. Is a, that gets into certification, that's a long road to walk.
Yeah. That is, I'm very happy to hearing that thing. And also that kind of statement should be included when you, we're talking to the ASO, because that is a strong message, the unique message from us.
Alice, you wanted the floor or, yes, right?
Yes, yeah. Well, thank you very, very much. Very impressive, all of the progress and actually, you know, even more impressive when we, we see ISOC mentioned, you know, out there and, you know, you see stakeholders like, you know, who traditionally we went to coming to us. You know, one example is law enforcement wanting to actually partner with ISOC at various levels, that we have to think about how we're going to be dealing with that. And it's not going to be just one, I can see several of them wanting to come. And I think as Walid was saying, because we become the expert in a lot of, you know, internet-related issues, we are going to get more of that. And as our campaigns really begin to have an impact, it makes it really much, much easier for us to work with stakeholders that were traditionally difficult. For example, the African region, I'm really impressed that the African Union Commission is working with the internet society and so many other organizations have tried at so many different levels to work with the AU and it's, we've always hit, you know, you know, we've always had a problem with that. So it's impressive, congratulations. Really, really great. One question I have is regarding, I think what Raoul had put out regarding the Internet Governance Forum, a pet peeve of mine, but also, you know, something that I've started looking at and really questioning whether or not, to what extent we as the internet society want to continue investing in it, either trying to contribute to its reforming, you know, reforming it, or to what extent are we seeing ourselves, you know, getting involved with it? Because I think there's a problem. For example, in this year, I don't think there's a horse for it. So what does that mean exactly?
So the number two meeting that Raul discussed was with the head of Dessa. And I'm going to say this quickly, it's a long discussion. Dessa suggests that the Internet Governance Forum should come inside the UN. This was never how it was set up, was never to be a UN agency function. We made it very clear, or I did. So Raul's the good guy, I'm the bad guy in this meeting, okay? I don't think so. That would not bring our support, said I. That's not going to work. They're very worried about us, that we are actually going to pull out, but they need to worry right now. The reason that Raul put out his nice guy blog was to say, here's how we could proceed and we're happy to engage on, with you on that. But it's clear to us that unless we get some, A, not go down that path, and B, get some changes to the way it is now, because it's really sort of stuck, that we're just throwing money at stuff. We don't even have a sponsor for next year. No government will sponsor this. As we say, when the customers don't come, that's a good sign. So right now, please be steady with us, because you're going to hear that we're, we're acting a little bit, you know, we're backing off a little. I don't think it is our intention to walk away. Our intention is to see if we can give it another shot and get it better, and that's Raul's position on this. Now you go, I just wanted to be clear, we've had two very difficult meetings on this issue. Constance says they're scared of you, Kathy. I said, no, they're frightened, we're not going to give them the money, but that's what we need to do right now.
And speaker, and then?
Quick question for clarification. You said there's no sponsor for next year or for Sisi? Okay.
Sponsor for this year. Germany has it next year and there's a sponsor the year after, but there's no sponsor for this year.
Raul then.
Yes, just one quick clarification. It's, I signed it, in fact, I wrote most of the blog and I signed it, but this is the, this is a collective production and it's the, obviously Sally's team is fully involved and working on this. Yes. Okay, that's IETF, while this is a policy issue, that is something that is close to my heart, because I have been involved in this for, since before its inception. And so this is why Sally is very kind with me and she led me to do things on that. Very quickly about the chapters, Olga, we, as Sally said, that we fully agree with you. And this, we are trying to do that, we are bringing, presenting campaigns in every regional call with the chapters, in the chapter advisory council calls. We are, but we have to do more, we have a team working on how we can do more things and we will fully take advantage of the regional workshops. The first of them happening in 30 days in Sofia, in beginning of April, I think. And with regard to the indicators, that's an invisible indicators that you mentioned. One example is the, that's in the, in a high-level meeting, governmental meeting that happened in Buenos Aires two weeks ago, organized by the Organization of American States, the Secretary General opened, that's Organization of American States is the organization of 34 countries of the Americas. And the Secretary General opened the meeting with a speech where he mentioned community networks, based on the agreement that we had signed with him. This is the kind of things that has a lot of value, it's sometimes it's difficult to measure. And all the other things have been already answered.
Thank you, Raul. So you were eating into your new slot. So the next slot, it's number 19, which is a report by Raul on the Regional Bureau.
So could I thank you all for your comments on this? This was terrific.
And I think that Desiree has a comment or? Okay, so then, yeah, go ahead and.
I'd just like to congratulate everyone and very happy to see progress on all fronts, internally, AMS and the news and also progress on all the campaigns. Just to comment along the lines, to think about going forward, how to involve org members in the campaigns as well, not just chapters, to think about that. Thank you.
Yeah, Sally, yeah, sure.
So to Olga and Desiree's point, I think we, we have to, we are in a learning stage of how to work differently with our community and our community is going to be learning along with us as well. But there are some great opportunities if, when you have these four, I was talking about this with the OMAC the other day, when you have these four kind of focus areas, then it allows our members to signal to us, hey, we have expertise here, we're interested here, we have the G20 in our backyard, so we're interested in that in Argentina, or we have this particular expertise that we want to contribute. Or we have this particular expertise that we want to contribute. Japan has done this, the Japanese chapter. But I think to your point, if we could do that on a more holistic scale, then the chapters and the org members become the extension of of our message. And that is really where we want to get to. And my goal would be by the end of the year, we could show a lot of progress in that regard. That's at least the vision and we're working towards that. But you are both absolutely right. The if if it's just ISOC staff, we're not going to get the kind of results that we want to see.
Quickly, yeah.
Sometimes the the community perceive it, all your activities as a ISOC org partnership thing from afar, from afar. You see.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. To be clear, I mean, we need to speed a bit up because, you know, then Kathy will have to leave at some point. So I'm trying to cover the the whole agenda. So it's not just like I want to cut discussions. It's just like, you know, we need to to cover some ground. But I mean, please continue following following up offline. And then in the in the working working board session we will have later, we'll have plenty of time there. So it's just like we need a hard stop at some point. So Raul, please go up, go ahead. Number 19.
As James said earlier today, we feel that we are working much better in the team. We we succeed in breaking the the silos in the organization and the integration is is much, it's much better. This also brings a challenge to us is because the coordinated in a highly distributed organization takes time, consumers' resources. So we have been discussing in the in the last year and a half, how to build an organization that is more naturally integrated and coordinated. And this is what made us to, we concluded that we should strengthen the regional teams, but in a way that it could benefit also the all the the teams of the organization. And this is what we proposed to you in the work plan. This is what we are doing. We are hiding in a also in a, it's not only that we are strengthening the regions, but that we are hiding in a more consistent manner. We know the kind of people we want to have in the teams. And this is we are hiding consistently across all organizations for having the people that is able to work in an iterative manner, collaborating with other teams, positive leaders, that's our is able to to help us to achieve our objectives. Next slide, please. So this is a, we had in the in the regional teams that we together, we had 22 people at the end of last year. And we are having an important expansions, as you approved in the work plan. And so we plan to have 30, 33.5. We still don't know who will be the point five, but that's a, we will have to cut somebody. This is not only additions, but also realignments of staff. As Frederick commented yesterday, for example, Sharon was working on chapter as a chapter manager in Europe and now she's a policy, a policy officer in the in the region. And we have other cases like Christine Sagazan, who is now the the leader of the of the our chapter manager team. And she used to be the the chapter manager for for Media List. We realigned some of the positions and obviously we are also in hiding new people. Next one, please. Those are, okay, those are the realignments I already mentioned, so please, next one. And those are the the positions that are posted at this moment. And I will comment later on what the outreach manager means. And the, but we have two positions, open one in Asian Pacific, another one in Latin America and the Caribbean. And, okay, we we see that in the in the list. I think that's the, and some of the positions will be opened with the objective of being filled in the in the quarter three or quarter four. But the next one is the most interesting. This is a, this is the approach that we are taking, the way that we think that the the organization will be much more integrated. And we were reminding with James here that we met last year in London in May. And this is where this really we we elaborated this concept. So it was less than one year ago and it is a fully is a, I don't say fully implemented, but it's fully adopted. Like I said, that's this culturally has been already adopted and the all the staff is on board with this with this approach. So we have, you you can see that we are hiding people in the in in the regions, but they are integrated with the functional teams. So it's a win-win approach, because we are strengthening the regional teams, but also the functional teams are being benefited. One example, I have a policy in the the first row. And the, for example, Sharon now that is a is a is part of our policy team from Europe and she is one of our leaders on GDPR. So that this is how the policy team is taking advantage of the resources that we have in the regions. That they are not just only allocated to the regions, they are contributed to the whole organization. We had for the first time in 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 January, the ITO retreat in Amsterdam with the participation of all the technical resources we have in the in the in the regions. And it was amazing. And I also, I always mentioned the one case that I was talking to some, one technical guy from one region and I say, oh, don't forget to mention this to the ITO team. And he answered, I belong to the ITO team. So this is, okay, that's a, I called immediately Olaf and said, we are succeeding.
And I already know, you knew, because he said to me, I feel at home here.
Yeah. So they, and we have people in the in the regions, in the ITO team that are leading works, that are global works too. And so, and so this is a, is really is what will make us be more integrated. And we have defined that more precisely some of the roles. For example, Noel, Noel Guzman in in Asian Pacific, she was doing already policy work, but now she she knows that she's, this is her role in the in the region. And so she's also fully integrated with the policy team. And why I say that I would mention the outreach managers? Obviously, we don't have, we we will need even more to hire more people for completing all this this table. So we are, one of the things that we we are, where we are putting our emphasis, where we are hiding is that we want to hire people that is able to perform more than one work. So we don't want just specialists in one topic, neither in the policy matters or in the technical matters. So we need people like like the excellent people we have in the policy team that are able to to deal with different topics and the. And so the in, we are hiding in some regions, we don't have a budget for hiding a communication person and a policy person. But we are hiding people that is that is have background in policy, but also that have the characteristics, outspoken people that is that like the the communications matter. And it is able also to coordinate with the communications team for giving, bringing our voice with to be heard in the in the regions in a in a well coordinated manner with the communication team. We are very excited with this. We are on time, really, we in some, I think that we have final word, okay, no. There's a, we we are making final interviews in some of the of the positions. I think that's we will hire, we will have final decisions, three or four positions in two weeks. And we are doing, okay, everything on track as as Olaf said before. That's a good appreciation. Thank you.
Any comment from someone? I know.
That was, that was quite good. So Kathy then.
So that's our first quarter. And I have to tell you, this is the year that this team has just blossomed. We've never had a quarter like this, not a first quarter. We've always had a fourth quarter like this, where, you know, we get it all done finally. But to get off the the blocks this fast and have this much done on March the 28th, I have not seen and I just want to congratulate them. I I just like can't get over the kind of energy that we're seeing. And again, thanking you for your support, for supporting that plan, because it's working. Thanks.
Okay, good. Anything else? Okay, so now you, yes.
I really liked what I heard. It's great. I'm really, I can't remember a first quarter likes this. But I'm wondering, I didn't hear anything which wasn't accomplished. I didn't hear anything which was on the good side. I can't believe there must be something which we have lost. Didn't we lose some chapters? Didn't we lose some OIP members?
No, sir. But we wouldn't tell you anyway. There's always some bad news, but it's, but there's no catastrophe. I have to say, let me just think. There is, it really is, we're really marching forward.
No, but I mean, a good point.
By the way, we're not always smiling at each other like we are today. You know, this is struggle, but we're getting there.
Yeah. I think it's too early to say that's that something is going wrong. I think that's a, it's normal that in the first quarter, we are more focused in the achievements and things that going well. Probably after the second quarter or third quarter, we will say, oh, okay, this, we didn't achieve this that we planned to do.
Let me be clear. We are meeting as a senior team in two weeks to talk about how do we do all that and make sure that our staff understands where they sit in the plan. So that is really from us this way. And we are going to concentrate when we meet in wherever the heck that word is.
Case.
Yeah, he's making me crazy. About how do we make sure that everybody else feels like they know their roles and they're not just burdened under this? That's a lot of work. And that is, we understand that that's our job next.
Hans Peter.
And this was not criticism, just I wanted to know where I could help you or where we could help you.
No, I mean, if, yeah. No, I mean, if we can summarize what what Hans Peter means is that we will not have this should the messenger attitude. So if something is wrong, we want to know about that. Because otherwise, you know, it's, I mean, it's bad, actually, if if things surprise us. So it's just like, otherwise, we're going to be discussing here for 20 minutes and I I have something that needs to be done now. So, yeah, don't move, but for the remote participants, we're going to break for 20 minutes. Okay. So, yeah, welcome back. Sorry, it took a bit longer, the break. And as I was saying before, we have Todd's presentation now on organizational membership. But we will shrink significantly the the slots so that, you know, Todd gives us a heads up and tells us about, you know, what's next. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. We won't call it a presentation, won't put anything on the screen. A couple of things. On Org Membership 2.0, as we've been talking about, you've seen a lot of information and you've given some feedback. And I thank you all for taking that time. I sent some extra data to you on the list at the beginning of the week. Hopefully, you've all seen that. But just to say, to answer the questions that we had on the working call, if you have any others, please send them to me. What we haven't done, I think, is we haven't gone out and had a wider communication and conversation with our current org members, a wider list of them. And that's, I I think that's a good next step. I think that would give us a bunch of good data. We also, as you all know, this week had ISA 2.0, at least moving along. And we're in that operating agreement portion now. And I think that's going to set some some guidelines and some rules about how this will work going forward with the IETF. So my proposal, just move to that. My proposal is, is that we in Membership and Services continue to move forward. We will do a wider communication with the community, with the org members. We've spoken to a few of the Platinum members, but haven't gone any deeper than that, because obviously we we needed some input, but we'd like to have their input as well. So we want to go and do that. We want to continue forward with the repackaging of our benefits. That doesn't change really anything. It's just us doing what we're supposed to do, have that engagement, deliver those benefits with our members. And then continue to work on bringing new members in to the organization and and use our new benefits package as a way to try to bring those on. That will also give us some data. We'll we'll know if that's working and if that's something that's interesting to folks. We'll take all of that together. And in the next few months, hopefully before the AGM, we can give you some more information, some more data to look at on this, as well as feedback from both current members and new members. And then we can get to a point to ask you, you know, what steps are next in form of whether that be a resolution or or any of those types of things. So I think the the headline there is more to come. We would like to continue forward with understanding and working with our community to understand if this will work and then come back to you with that.
Excellent. Thank you, Todd. That that sounds like a great plan to me. Any comments?
My usual question is, when, when, when can you tell us how well it's working?
My goal will be to tell you how well it's working. Like I said, probably two, about two months. We want to do one-to-one conversations with our membership. So I think I need a little time. There's 150 of them, so we need a little time to do that. So, yeah. So I did, I'm just saying, John, I think in the next couple of months, we'll be able to give you a lot better data and feedback.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure this was, we're talking about months and not years.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And to be clear.
I mean, years more of this.
I agree with with the Ayasa, there's a lot of moving parts and we have to be kind of, you know, working on something that will last and is not something interim for like, you know, just one year that will change dramatically. So it sounds very sensible to me. Excellent. Thank you, Todd. Okay. So we are, as I said yesterday, we are doing a bit of agenda bash. So now we're going to go into a resolution we have about our policy development framework, which Kevin will put up on the screen. Okay, so therefore, all trustees to to see, it will be available in the material page as well. And and we will, we will pass the resolution by roll call. So I'll give 30 seconds for people to read it fully. Yeah. And John to prepare the tracking of the votes. As, as usual, you know, you say the name and what you vote, so that, you know, I don't have to be repeating last time we saw it, that was much faster. And and the options are going to be yes, no, and abstain. No, I mean, yesterday, you you guys disappointed me so much. Alternatively, we could do as as James suggested. So, you know, yes goes on the right corridor, no goes to that one and abstain. I guess they are in the middle or something. Okay, jokes aside, now now Johnny's ready. So we will start in in this direction. So starting with Desiree and and going in this direction. So Desiree.
Desiree, yes.
Glenn.
Richard, yes.
Hans Peter, yes.
Walid, yes.
Sean, yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Arish, yes.
Alice, yes.
Isak, yes.
Olga, yes.
Okay, thank you. So the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to recess for, you know, executive session for around 30 minutes with with discussion, maybe 35, something like that, that's approximate. And and then we will go back into open session in order to to basically, well, adjourn the meeting and and pass a resolution. So 30, 35 minutes. Okay, so welcome back. As we promised, we are coming back into the open session for passing a resolution. And while.
At least we moved in second.
Yeah, true. Who moves? Okay, I see a lot of people, Desiree moves. Richard seconds. Okay, and then we're gonna, we're gonna vote using a roll call as usual. So please state your name and the options are yes, no, and abstain. And the resolution is up there on on the screen. So we start with Desiree as before.
Desiree, for the record, I vote yes.
Glenn, I vote yes.
Richard, I vote yes.
Hans Peter, I vote yes.
Walid, yes.
Sean Turner votes yes.
Gonzalo, yes.
John, yes.
Arish, yes.
Alice, yes.
Hiroshi, yes.
Olga, yes.
Thank you. So the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, and then this takes us to to originally point 21 in the agenda, which is. Okay, and then this takes us to originally point twenty one in the agenda, which is any other business, so AOB. Any other topic? Last chance. Going, so now I move to adjourn the meeting. Okay, so the meeting, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.